Oh, yeah. No, in the bathroom. No.
I've stopped expecting that for myself.
You're a little kinder to yourself, I think.
If I can find my way home, that's a point.
I'm gonna adopt that attitude. All right. Can we close the door, Collette? Thank you. You ready, Hector? Okay, so it is September 18th and we will call the Talent City Council Regular Meeting to Order at 6:53. Roll call, please.
Here.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here. Here. Thank you, Hector. The next item on the agenda is additions and corrections to the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? All right, seeing none. Item number three is community announcements. Staff?
Mayor and members of the council, just a few community announcements, some upcoming events. On September 21st is Bear Creek Stewardship Day from nine until noon. Cleanup event that starts at Lynn Newbury Park. Sign up at thebearcreekstewards.org. Kind of related to that, I had it over the city managing report, but might be relevant here are a couple of other updates on Bear Creek. One is that the steam stream restoration project that was ongoing for several months is reported to be now complete. And the contractor who was working on that reports that the there are no further closures of the Greenway plant. So they're planning, they are planning some tours this fall to that people can attend, see what work was done. So stay tuned for the dates and times of those tours. And also on Monday, the request for proposals for the new Bear Creek project, the fuel reduction project, phase one, will be issued by RV cog. And they'll be seeking proposals to undertake that gesture of work along Bear Creek. Going back to the other announcements, we have the grand opening at Talent Maker City, 11 to 3 on September 21st. We have the Harvest Festival coming up on October 5th. Visit the organizer website at talentbusinessalliance.org on October 12th. We're hosting an open house on the Parks Master Plan Amendment from noon to 2 in the City Hall lobby. There'll be a public hearing on the same topic that's being scheduled for October 16th. Thank you. We have several notices of vacancies on city committees and commissions. Urban Forestry Committee has two vacancies, Parks Commission, two alternate member vacancies. Public Arts Committee, one alternate member vacancy. Architectural Review Committee, two alternate member vacancies. And Together for Talent, new members are always welcome. The general election is coming up on November 5th. We have six candidates for three seats. So watch for the election period to become more active. Then I wanted to announce also this evening that today we learned that the city's grant application for to fund rehabilitation of the skateboard park, the skate park, was approved today by the Oregon Parks and Recreation Commission by unanimous vote. And we expect to see the grant agreement coming within the next 30 to 60 days, after which the planning will start for the construction. That was good news today. All I have for now.
Well, congratulations on that CDBG grant. And many thanks to the entire staff who worked on it and and bringing that into the city. It's an example of having your cake and eating it too, when we were able to divert the funds to deal with the water meter issue and still be able to eventually work on the park. That was one of your first recommendations. Well done, Gary.
Thank you.
Any other community announcements? All right, hearing none. Item number four is recognition of Chief Jennifer Snook for service to the city of talent. Gary?
So Mayor, I'd like to introduce Richard McReynolds. Mr. McReynolds through the Department of Defense is affiliated with the Employer Support, Guard and Reserve Organization. And he has some other folks from that group with him to make a presentation to Chief Snook.
Thank you very much for having me, sir. As you say, I'm looking to follow my full history in Arlington and Ken Snook, if that makes sense. And he's been in for the soldier's support, the commitment to the support and back service for the fallen workers as well. For those of you who are in the force of guarding the earth, who are all today, it's hard to resist. As we said, the lead is on between the landowners and the employees serving the military's support. To our mission, basically, we're focusing with the military service, employees, both values, stance, and fortitude of our employers. To achieve this mission, we educate employers and send them to understand the lessons of our stories and the people of us. If there's a problem, we all agree to meet before the time to take problems and then, of course, we all recognize the stories of our friends. And that's our happy duty to the government. So that says, Ken Spence, who was here on this, here we go, he does his part, he has heard Patriot Award. You were nominated for the Warrior Support of Guardians, your Patriot War by Oregon Guard, that's a senior enlistment on their form. This award is the justice of the senior enlistment squad appreciation and your support of the celebration of the Oregon and rest of the guard. The following is included in this nomination merit. I was recently selected for the frontman of my team of police, Captain Spence, has been exceptionally understanding and supportive throughout my entire police service process. Each gun is always a drug code and works against crimes by military service and has worked with me to coordinate how to take time off while minimizing and preventing past control works. Gives the separate supervisor to be my preparation for the frontman's commitment to the people. You are seen recognized for the 50th National Security and Protection Freedom of Supporting Employees Participation in America's National Guard Report. Here's the word you saw in leadership. He also proposed a question on the policy of your department and the state of talent that supports dividing the militaries of their employees. The corporation employers is a central, successful company that the military is assigned to guard your troops. On behalf of the Department of Defense and the Navy Committee, we support the guardianship and please to present you with the Patriot Award. And recognize you and the South Coast Department and the Central Coast Department as supporters.
If you can take the mic. Yep.
A little bit, since the city of talent has recognized a patriot actor player, it's also my pleasure to present the city with statement of support, which is just in our hallway to thank the city per se, who would need to support the military service of the employees.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. And I'd like to share this with our city manager.
And Hector wants to get some pictures. So, yeah. Better, better Jen than me. You have to look at that.
Chief, thanks for bringing this honor to the city.
Thank you.
I was off microphone when I thanked Chief for bringing this honor to the city.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is speakers heard on non-agenda items. Hector, do we have any speaker request forms from the online? This is the opportunity to make a speaker request form, not only for non-agenda items, but it's also the last opportunity to make a request form for any item on the agenda.
Mayor, there are no additional requests beyond my email. However, there is a hand raised in the audience.
Okay. So we don't take hand raises from either the audience in, present, or online? Okay, thank you.
Yep.
The next item on the agenda is public presentation 6.1. Let's, let's give her a minute to.
We could flip 6.1 and flip 6.2.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and move on to 6.2, which presentation by Jackson County Fire District 5. Welcome and thank you, Chief Buster.
Let me hold this for you, if you hear me okay.
Yep.
All right. First, thank you for having me tonight. I talked to city manager a few months ago and I've come into this position and we just had a conversation that in general with the city of talent, Phoenix, want to be more open and have conversations, keep you updated on district activities and be more engaged with cities that we serve. So that's part of the reason I'm here tonight and the other part is to give you an update on the district operations and then open up for any questions your rest of council may have. So I said first, just want to thank you. You know, we appreciate the partnership with cities, how a lot of great projects over the years, been very engaged in the community. Give a letter of support tonight for the upcoming grant that you're looking at. So excited to be a partner with you. Just talking about call volume a little bit and responses in the city of talent. Checking, so last year we ran about 754 calls, we just been the city limits of talent from our station here. This year, we're looking to be on track to do about the same. So call volume within the city is staying pretty consistent. As far as fires this year, we, I'll say we've been fortunate, we have had a few large fires, but not as many as we've had in recent, recent times. So that was good news for us and for the community. ODF did say that they're looking at keeping fire danger higher for a little bit longer, waiting for more rains to come in. And then they said probably mid-October is when they're, they're gonna be looking at ending fire season for the year. So sure, the community will be welcome to hear that and the rains have been getting, been great to help. Within the city of talent, I'm not sure how aware you are, but there were some grant funding opportunities this year for home assessments and fire risk assessments within the community. We had great support from talent. I know there's a lot of, a lot of residents reached out, had those assessments done. We talked to city manager, there were small grants available, but they did go pretty, pretty rapidly. But we're still working with any homeowners, like further assessments done, coming up the plans, things like that for, for their properties. Along with that, building planning, our staff's been pretty engaged with that. Battalion Chief Dave Meads has been doing a lot of that work, I'm sure you've seen him out in the community. So again, supporting that work, supporting the rebuild and helping get those projects moving along. Along with other things, I'm sure you're aware, the district's facing challenges over the last few months. I appreciate your mayor and council being involved in some of the meetings we've had. Again, we have faced a lot of challenges, we have had to make some adaptations, the way we do business. Service in the city of talent, at this point, has not been impacted by those decisions. Unfortunately, our station at Immigrant Lake, we have had to reduce staffing out there depending on staffing levels in the district, simply, excuse me, for financial reasons. Looking at the shortfall we had faced, went to Dover's chief, had a lot of concerns about where the year was headed and spility of the district, things like that. The board has been very supportive, worked together well to try to find solutions. The labor group and our staff have been involved and done what we've done to make cuts where we had, but still provide as much service as possible. So I said, within the city of talent, as you know, our, our engine is still staffed at the station here. We currently are still housing the Phoenix engine out of that station. That building has not been moved into yet under our, something still don't know that construction wise, others that we're working through. So like I said, you still have that, those two companies here. For the future, I know there's been a lot of, a lot of talk about different things and the challenges that we're facing and where we're at. I will say that with the, the work we're doing, I believe we have a good path forward. It's not gonna be an easy year, but we are making it, making it through and we will continue to provide the service that, that you've come to expect. There's also been questions about our partnerships with other agencies, that's been talked about frequently. And I will say that what we're looking for is a partner and partnerships that will help strengthen the district. We're not saying that the district can't fulfill its mission right now. What we're saying is we're trying to find ways to do it more effectively and more efficiently. And partnerships with, you know, it's been in media and when, in our meetings with Fire District 3, they've talked, be able to assist us administratively and add more services than what we, we can currently provide. So that's why we're reaching out to those other agencies. I've talked to most, most elected bodies I've been with now, and we've talked that, you know, between talent or Ashland and Medford districts. Three's area, there's five fire chiefs, that's a lot of fire chiefs for a small amount of area. And so what we're trying to do is reduce redundancy where we can, be more effective and we really want to focus on getting the people out on the road to respond to calls. So that's the goal with those talks. Sure you have questions? I know it's a lot to cover in a brief period, but I don't want to take too much of your time. So open it up if you have any questions for me.
I, I do have a couple of questions if, but I'm happy to open it up. What's that? Okay. You know, first of all, I want to tell you that I appreciate that the Fire District recently had a meeting where they, where we had all of the mayors and the city managers in the room from the area and we were able to discuss a lot of the concerns that are, are happening. One of the things that kind of right, rises up a little bit in our community, when I'm having discussions with residents, is just how little they know about what happened with that building in Phoenix. And, and just with the understanding that residents throughout the district are, are, are gonna be shouldering that additional cost in Phoenix. And, and you know, I'm, I'm getting to a question. We know that there was a need for a bigger building because we know that Phoenix is gonna expand, they're gonna expand the city limits. So that's certainly understandable. But one of the things, and then, and then during that meeting, the city mayor, the mayor of Phoenix had committed to having a, an informative meeting, which he has since withdrawn. So my question, and you don't have to answer it tonight because it might require some research, but I'm hoping that our community will get to find out a little more about how, how the overrun itself occurred. You know, what were the additional expenses that, that drove up the additional costs? And where do the, where do the responsibilities for those expenses lie? I mean, when you look at this on face value, the contract that was written, entered into from Jackson County Fire District 5 previously was to share the cost of the overruns. And on face value, a split like that just doesn't seem like there was any definition to that split. So I mean, it could be that Jackson, you know, be careful what you ask for, it could be that the district owes more than, than, than half, but, or whatever the share split is. But it does seem like a shortcut. And I think it's important for our residents to know what is the liability to the fire district? What will the residents of our community be shouldering in terms of the additional cost of that, that building? And then, and, and the last number I heard was an additional $132,000 a year to the district. Is that still the number?
I believe 132,000, and that would, so that would be, if you break it down, the, the max that we were told from the debt service would be 103,000 a year. The rest would be for things like insurance on the building. General maintenance and then things like the elevator and that have a reoccurring contract that are, are part of that shared cost as well.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification because I don't think I got that from the last meeting. So I really appreciate that and I, and I want you to know that I really appreciate you being willing to look into this for us. Yeah. The other question I have is you mentioned that you are looking at a path forward. And I know when you brought, and again, I just want to thank you for bringing all the leadership together. I thought that was really, a really great thing to do. And there were some really good discussions that happened that day. But one of the things that did come up was, you know, whether or not there would be like a, a plan that's gonna be drawn up for, for future operations. I know you guys are facing some ongoing heavy, heavy costs and how, you know, how to get us through, not just through this crisis that we're in, but how to get the community through as we move forward. Will that be drawn, will there be a plan that's presented to the community around that?
Yeah, and I would say to that question, for the last few months, we've had to, you know, basically come up with a plan to get us through the first few months and, and where we're at. As you know, you've heard me say it a few times now, it took a long time to get all the information and we're still looking for some, some of the information, understand, you know, truly where we're at and some issues, the Phoenix building being one of those. And I will speak to that briefly. We are working with the board and the city of Phoenix to get as much detail as possible with a look at the next board meeting, being able to present more of that to the community. So again, I just encourage you to be there for that. But the path forward, now that we are navigating these first few months, is a look at what, what the next year, few years after that will look like. And, you know, and in doing so, engaging community partners, we wanted to use strategic planning within the district, so within our staff, within just within our organization and see where we're at and what our values are and where we're gonna move forward. And like any good strategic plan, that would involve members of the community. So meetings like this, meeting with city managers of both cities that we protect, meeting with our neighboring fire districts and departments. I can say that, you know, we yesterday met with Rogue Valley Fire Chiefs, so once a month, all the fire chiefs meet. And a lot of the things that were discussed there were ways that we all serve our communities better. And we talked about how we compared the, there's Fire National a couple of weeks ago, compared to the response to that, to what we've seen in the past and how much better things have become because we're working closely together. There are things, organizations out there, for example, Rogue Valley Fire Alliance, I don't know if you've heard of those yet, but some districts in the north, District 1, District 4, District 3, have an alliance where they're looking at shared costs on things like technology services, down to just station supplies, how, how they can save money. So short and long term, that's what we are looking at. You know, defining where we're gonna be as an organization, how we can reduce costs and how it can be more effective to the community moving forward. And with that, like I said, we are looking at other agencies to see, you know, can we reduce costs in administration? Where can we reduce costs to keep the most people outrunning calls? Because that's, we know that's where the impact is, we need more people on the streets. So now let's do that answer.
It did. And it leads me to my last question.
Okay.
So you, when you mentioned developing a strategic, strategic plan with community partners and, and hearing from the constituents in the district. I, I've come before the board asking this, and I'll probably ask it every time until, until, hopefully we get an answer one way or the other. That it's very likely that whatever the strategic plan is, that the voters will probably not have an opportunity to vote on it. And you know, this is the jurisdiction that the people built. My, my strongest hope is that the district board and, and yourself decide that as part of that path forward, as part of building that strategic plan that you call a town hall or two and, and, and get the residents in a room and hear from them about how they want to see the solutions moving forward. Because you know, there may be some financial impacts that are gonna be absorbed, we're absorbing financial impacts in Phoenix that, that many residents were really unaware of here in this community. And, and I just, I don't, I can't stress upon the, the district enough that I'm hearing every day that there is a lack of information and they want an opportunity to hear what is going on, what's the plan, how's it gonna impact them financially? And, and they want to have an opportunity to, to have a voice in it. Is that something that you'll take back to the board and remind them that we asked again?
Absolutely, and I mean, for me, you know, I, it's not something I say, I truly believe in collaboration. I, I work for the city of Phoenix, I lived in the city of talent, so I have kind of roots in both cities to a degree. And I, I value this community, the district values this community and, and any strategic plan, planning going forward. It would definitely be my recommendation that we bring in all our partners to, to have that voice, so.
And you're saying that those partners include the residents?
Yeah, absolutely. The residents are, the residents are what make up our district. We, we, we serve not just, you know, one city or two, we serve a very diverse community, rural, very rural and, and then suburban, like city of talent, Phoenix. So yeah, we, we, we value the input from our citizens and we look at that as a board.
All right, thank you so much. Those are my questions. Anybody else? Councilor Prenamrath?
Yeah, I, just to piggyback, I have two questions. One is to piggyback, you could, if you wanted to put it on ballot, an advisory vote from the community to get, you know, a real voice of the people on whatever strategic plan you decided to put forward. So that's just something in your toolbox. My question, and it's, it's, it's a kind of a funny question, but I, I do hear from constituents of the, the feeling that there's more sirens than there have been in the past. Decades ago, part of my job was to listen to a police scanner, I would hear often, slow your code, you don't need to. What I would like to ask you now, what is the policy? What I would like to ask you now, what is the policy of Fire District Five on sirens?
Yeah. So it's a good question. And I will say, one of the reasons that you're hearing more of them is that we are getting busier and busier. And
So that's, that's, can I walk, could I, could I walk into Fire District Five and see the log? Back in the day, I could do that. Is that?
Yeah, it's, it's a lot trying now. So we could show you, like, I could even, the next time I come before, I could even show you some graphics and whatnot to show our call volume increases and things like that. We're dictated, so most of our, sixty percent of our calls are medical calls. And so when you call 911 on a medical call, they ask you a list of questions. And based on those questions, they determine whether it's a priority one or a priority three call. If it's a priority one, that means lights and sirens for us. So anytime we get a priority one call on a medical side, that would dictate lights and sirens. If it's a priority three or lower, that would be no lights, no sirens, just we drive out. Sometimes you'll see us driving through, stopping at a house. That's, that's what we're doing. Anytime we go to any fire at all, any motor vehicle crash are all typically going to be lights and sirens calls for us.
Is that available online, the log?
So actually soon it will be. We're working with District Three to redo our website. And part of that, if, if you ever go to Fire District Three's website, you'll see at the bottom, they have a, it's an ongoing daily update of their, their call line and what, what they're doing. That's our goal to get that added to ours as well. So right now, no, but if you can, and I'd, I'd be happy to show you all that for the year.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that? So level three calls, no lights and sirens. Is that the same as saying that they, they are not allowed to run lights and sirens on a, on a type three call?
Yeah. So honestly, our preference is to not run lights and sirens. If you look at statistics, a lot of accidents for us and the public are caused when we do that. So we consider it a high risk. So there'll be actually times that we give our, our staff latitude that if, if they're seeing call information that they don't, is not kind of reconciling to, you know, a lights and sirens response, that they actually can choose not to run those if, if they feel like it's not needed at the time based on actual information. Sometimes when people call dispatch, the first couple of things they may tell them are completely different than the conversation you get further down the call and you get more information. So that, that can update it. But typically they, they're not going to run lights and sirens if, if it's not a call that requires that.
But it's up to their discretion?
Not, not to upgrade. So we, we, and we even with our ambulance partners, so we, City of Talent, you'd get action, fire and rescue as your ambulance here. And then City of Phoenix and somewhere rural, we get mercy flights. And so our goal is actually, once we get on scene, do an initial assessment. We actually try to reduce them down so that they're not responding code three unless they have to.
So I guess my last question is, would your call, would your log of when the trucks go out match up with 911 calls or dispatch calls?
They should all match. Like I said, unless, unless information changes or unless, like I said, they had information where they didn't feel it's necessary to respond code three, those should, should all match.
But the truck doesn't go out on a call or through town sirens without a dispatch call. Is that right?
We do get, sometimes we will get a call directly to the station that doesn't generate a call right away. So we'll notify them as, as we're responding. But typically, any call that we run is tied to a, a dispatch number.
Okay. I just, there was a period of time where I had noticed that there were seeming a, a huge number of siren calls, sirens going through the city. And, and you couldn't find the pulse point, the, the ID from dispatch.
Yeah.
And I, I, I just assumed that pulse point's probably not very reliable or something, but I was curious about it though.
You know, pulse point was designed for CPR and unfortunately, it hasn't really been used for that purpose. It became more of a scanner function. And the problem with it is that it is one of those data sources that, you know, if I say, say I call 911, my chest is hurting. It might get coded as a chest pain and in reality, you know, someone poked me with a stick. And it locks it in, same as we had a lot of issues where if someone called in and said they smelled smoke in their house, like we'll get that a lot, you know, electrical smell. It would show it as a full structured fire response. And so, you know, we get people call the station. The neighbor's house on fire, is there a fire in my area? And it really would have just been a single unit response versus a full structure. So there is some discrepancy with pulse point.
It's a luxury to have you here and be able to ask these curiosity questions because I've, I've often wondered. Are, is there any other questions? Thank you, Chief, for coming. And we hope to see you more, we hope to see more of you here with occasional updates. It would be, it would be nice to hear from the jurisdiction on that.
I appreciate the invite and said quarterly at least, I'd be happy to come by. If you want more, let me know.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. That was item six point two. We're going to go ahead and go back to item six point one, presentation of the talent police. Presentation of the talent police of State of Oregon, organized retail theft grant and acquisition of Flock Automatic License Plate Recognition System. Staff?
Chief Stook is here to make his presentation, so I'll turn the floor to her.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you, as an agenda, we're going to have an item for the Okay. Good evening, Council and Mayor. Before you, as the agenda item for the grant that the city of talent was awarded for the amount of $12,000 that'll go towards four automated license plate readers to be put in set locations within the city. For this grant process, twenty law enforcement agencies in the state applied for funding and talent was one of the seven selected recipients. Other recipients in the area was Klammer Falls Police Department, Eagle Point, Tigered, Lincoln City and Eugene. What I found interesting was Eugene was awarded eighty cameras or license plate reader systems. The ALPR, which is the Automated License Plate Reader System, is used to assist with criminal investigations. And such as endangered juveniles, stolen vehicles, missing persons and Amber Alerts. And what it does is compares the plate numbers that pass the device against the plates that have been entered into the database, which is the law enforcement data system. And then the statewide database is NCIC. So we have a car that is reported stolen or talent or a missing person. It gets entered in the system and then if they were traveling, say in Montana, it would come up as stolen as well. The, the technology is available as a solar powered fixed mounted system and is mounted on public property. I did attach some photos of the system showing the various mounting methods and as well as a couple of vehicles that the the flock had provided us. And those are not local vehicles that are captured. What the technology does is captures objective evidence without compromising individual privacy. What the system is capable of is it detects the license plates and vehicles as they pass by the camera. It does not detect facial recognition, people, gender or race. It only takes images of the examples that I showed you, the rear of the license or the rear of the vehicle. The data is owned by the talent police department and is never sold to third parties. And the system access requires an active investigation to include a case number and a reason for a search. And that is input, inputted into the system and stored indefinitely. The data that is captured is only stored for thirty days and then it gets deleted from the cloud. The use is regulated by city or police department policy. We already have a policy drafted for that system and it is only tied to active investigations. Users are trained on how to use a system and what the requirements are. And there would be a portal or there will be a portal on the city website that explains what ALPR is. And it gives how many, it will say how many cameras there are or systems, plate reader systems there is. And how many searches have been done by law enforcement in the system and how many hits have come up based off the system's use. And hits would be, you know, stolen vehicle, missing, tied to a missing person. And so, you know, we've come before you to, to advise you of this information and, and to be transparent about what the system is and why the technology would be beneficial. You know, businesses and other law enforcement agencies are already using this technology. You know, one of the vendors is Lowe's. They, they have cameras at their parking lots. And there's agencies in the valley that have been using it for the last five to ten years. The grant requires that we report the use to the Criminal Justice Commission, who also oversees the other programs like the statistical transparency of policing, which is the stop data, asset forfeiture, use of force reporting. So these are just tools where law enforcement has seen successes on, and how, and they are effective. They can be a force multiplier to help identify needles in a haystack. Technology is advancing and this is our way of trying to stay current with the trends and using technology in order to solve major crimes. Some of the examples that we've seen on the use, as most of you are probably aware, we investigated a missing elderly person earlier in the week. And unfortunately, you know, the outcome wasn't what we were hoping for, but we were able to use the technology to find where she had been traveling in the valley a few days prior to her being reported missing. Another example is Klammer Falls has three cameras. During the elderly missing investigation, you know, I had to call them and say, we believe she may have traveled to Klammer Falls. Can you search the system and tell me if there's any hits of that vehicle in Klammer Falls? From the, a few days before she went missing till the day it was reported. The, and back to going to Klammer Falls is they were able to, they received late last month, there was a missing person out of Texas. And it was an endangered missing person and one of their cameras picked up the license plate and it flagged that it was stolen or excuse me, involved with a missing person, reported stolen. And they were able to safely find this missing endangered person and get her away from the person that she was with. So there are some successes, a lot of them I can't talk about, but there's a lot in the valley that I'm aware of that the, this tool will help not only us find people within our community, but other agencies as well, find their missing people and stolen vehicles. And vehicles tied to organized retail theft as well.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Penamara?
Yeah, this sounds like very interesting technology. I'm, I'm, most of my questions have to do with what, what we would make public on the website. So I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about that. First of all, the, the locations of where the cameras are, those are not, that's not disclosed to the public?
Correct. Okay. But they're not hard to find. Okay. It's, yeah, they're pretty easily spotted.
I'm, I'm wondering about false positives with this technology. Do you have any information on that?
When an officer receives a hit, typically in bigger agencies, they go to a supervisor on duty, but we don't have supervisors on duty 24/7. So they would go to the officer that's on duty. So if a vehicle passed a camera that's tied to some criminal activity that's been entered in the system, they would get an alert, say in this vehicle passed by this location. And they would, before they take action, they would need to confirm that that is still a valid, like stolen vehicle or, or missing person. So they're still supposed to check and make sure that that's still a valid entry.
So that, that makes sense to me. I'm, I'm actually wondering about the technology itself, that it misreads. How often would it misread a license plate?
I have no knowledge of
For a queue or something like
I have no knowledge of any misreadings. Even if a vehicle doesn't have a plate, it takes an image of that vehicle, it just doesn't read a license plate. So if it's obstructed, it wouldn't be able to read the plate. But otherwise, it's, it's, it's reading plates, it's not storing. Well, it, it does store that data. So like, for example, the missing person we just had, I was able to see some of the activities of where they had been. It didn't necessarily help the investigation, but it knew, it let us know that where she was a few days before. So with that is I have not seen or experienced any false positives. If it can't read a plate, it won't, it won't read the plate. You won't get to capture that data.
Is it
Counselor Greider?
Thank you, sort of a, so is it just constantly reading every plate that goes by or how does it select?
It, it, it picks it, picks up the images and it reads, it reads plates. It doesn't, so if plates are entered, it'll, there'll be a hit. It doesn't tell us who's driving that car. It doesn't say, you know, that car is registered to this person. It is only flagging the ones that are entered into the system nationwide.
But it's like scanning
It scans, correct.
Then it just hits if it matches up with
Correct, correct.
Counselor Pushtesel?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, does this system fall under the CEGIS requirements or it's outside that?
Yes, yes.
So then it's, it's pretty, pretty tough to get access to it if you don't have a reason to look at it.
Correct, correct. Only people that are authorized to run license plates, to use the system are able to access the system. So everybody has to be trained and certified.
Counselor Colley?
Yeah, I appreciate your report on this and I think it's cool to get a grant for this kind of technology. My question is about the locations. Is there a reason to not publicly disclose the locations? I mean, red light cameras are publicly searchable where they are. And then my second question to that is have you determined the locations and what process are you using to decide where you're going to put them?
So the locations that, we're still in the early stages. And the company does all the permits, pulls the permits and does the installation. We are paying zero out of pocket to use the technology for a year. If we continue the technology, then it would be $3,000 per camera is the fee every year. They maintain them. They're based off LTE wireless technology. They're protected on, it's all cloud-based storage. I'm not opposed to disclosing the location. The locations that we have in mind is the main Egress and into town. So, you know, Valley View, South Pacific Highway on both ends, north and south. And the fourth, I haven't quite determined the best spot. But, but really what we're trying to do is, so just prior to the meeting, we got a call of two vehicles abandoned at the Chevron or the, now it's Pinnacle by the truck stop. And they were both stolen out of Portland. So had we had a camera, it would have, as they entered town, we would have been able to, to know that immediately.
Thank you.
Can you tell us a little bit about the success rates that they have for something like Amber Alert, for example?
I don't have a tallied success rate because each agency tracks their own successes on the devices. So, you know, for example, I didn't reach out to any local agencies and say, you know, how many missing children have you recovered? A lot of it is stolen vehicles or vehicles related to major crimes that leads to solving some of the major cases that we've had.
That makes sense. Yeah. So that leads me to another quick question, if I may, Counselor Penamara. So it, it seems to me that there should be more data. And I only say that because this, it's, it, it seems to be processed through, you know, one, whoever we're paying the annual fee to. whoever we're paying the annual fee to and whoever everybody's reporting stolen vehicles to, et cetera. So how is it that they're not maintaining data? What, I mean, am I like not connecting the dots here?
Well, we we are the only one that would have access to our data, so we would be the ones that would have to report that. And so it is trackable within your own agency, but not as like, who, you know, a search of everybody in Oregon that's had success on this program. I that data is not accessible because that's their own data.
Okay, so you don't report back to the system that you've caught the car? Or you don't, so that they remove the license plate number or anything like that?
So those get removed by us removing them into our system. Every missing person, stolen vehicle, once it's recovered, we have an obligation to go in immediately and remove those from the system. And so that they're no longer entered and then picked up somewhere else falsely.
Yeah, it's just interesting to me that the main that the main system doesn't track track those changes and things like that, but I I won't push the issue.
Yeah, so the system, when you enter a person, an article, something in the system, it updates, I believe, every four hours. So, for example, the missing person that we took on Monday, I reached out and to see if they could enter immediately, instead of waiting for the updates, to capture that data and put it into the FLOC system. So there is a, there is a lag time unless you have them. The agencies can go in themselves and put it in there and so it's instant.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel Penamara and then Counsel Colley. Counsel Colley?
Yeah, my question is about the cost. You said there's no cost for a year and then it's $3,000 per camera every year after that, correct?
If we decide to continue with the program.
Do other users of the system who don't have the cameras, like when you asked for info from Klima Falls, did you, do you have to pay to use the system? Because it seems like, you know, other groups would benefit from us having cameras. We would obviously benefit from, you know, Medford having them or whatever, or is it just open use for police departments?
For law enforcement agencies, it's open use. Could we have to have a valid reason again to to access?
Counsel Penamara?
Yeah, um, so just looking again, what we're putting on the city website and transparency portal policies, usage. I'm a little concerned about number of vehicles detected, hot list. It sounds like if a stolen car just drives through 99, we pick it up. So I'm not really a fan of having, you know, those kinds of statistics on the website. I'm wondering, is that a requirement?
No, it's not a requirement. It's just an effort to be transparent about what this, it'll tell you what the system does and doesn't do. It'll tell you how many cameras we have and it'll also tell you, refer to my notes here real quick, but it also will tell you how many hot list hits there are and plate plates red. Basically, it doesn't tell you what plates are red. It doesn't give you any data about any vehicles. It's just giving you numbers and then telling you what the system does and doesn't do and what our policy is.
But a hot list hit is indicative of crime.
It's a, it's a stat. It's not necessarily necessarily our crime. It's a crime that, you know, just like I said, we just recovered two stolen vehicles out of Portland today. But the people were traveling together, stole two vehicles, abandoned them in the city. We get a stat for the recovery that is a number that's captured in our system.
Can we add to the city policy that the police department reports on those stats bef- before each renewal? I mean, it does seem like, you know, I I I don't think $12,000 is the biggest expense in the world, but being able to just, you know, review the value of it on an annual basis, I think it has the potential also to it also has the potential to reaffirm the value of it.
We can report that to you, that's something both Chief and I would do as a part of it. If she's going to make the money.
Yeah, I mean, I assume it would come as a recommendation through the budget process, et cetera, maybe just having that data and hearing from the chief. Could we build that into the policy?
I, the policy covers the use for the city, for the, our police department policy use. I I mean, I could certainly put that in there that it would be reviewed. It is audited. There is a policy in there that it is audited. The use is audited by a supervisor, whether it's myself or the lieutenant. We still need to determine that, but we will do audits on searches as well.
I think my, yeah, I I appreciate that. And I think my point is really just, you know, evaluating the value of it to the city. And again, that could, that could also affirm the value of it to the city.
Yeah.
And as we renew for probably what's $12,000, but could be rising costs as you move forward as well, so.
Yeah, I'm not aware of how frequent their prices have increased, but I I do know that, you know, I I didn't think that we would receive, to be honest, this grant funding. But it is, you know, technology that everybody has cameras these days. And and when we have things that happen, you know, we typically go door to door to see if people have cameras, cameras or go to the businesses, just trying to capture anything so we can help, you know, solve whatever crime it is we're investigating. This again, just picks up license plates and images, the rear images of vehicles. But, you know, if it solves one missing person, one, you know, senior citizen, miss an Amber Alert, if we can solve one crime, it to that to that level, I think that $12,000 is money well spent.
I wouldn't disagree. Counsel Para Miller?
Thank you. Um, thanks for all this information, Chief. I had a question about, oh, I had a question. I know this is a relatively young company. I'm trying to remember, I want to say they're like five to seven years old or something. And I remember that was something that you presented us before. My question is, do you know if there's any information about how long the lifespan of these cameras typically live? Because I know that it's $3,000 per year per camera. I would just also be curious if they do have that data and if there's like a replacement policy as far as the cost of that as well. And it's probably in the fine print, I'm guessing.
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure. I know technology is constantly changing and, you know, just when I think we have the latest, greatest body cameras, you know, we sign a contract and six months later they have the new and improved system. So that is an issue. I don't know what their price increases are. I seem to have read somewhere in my research that they used to be $2,500 a camera. You know, another $3,000 a camera. I can't remember the timeframe of that increase, but they they maintain in service. So if a camera had a break, they come out, fix it, maintain it. We just purchased the camera. They do all the other work on the system. So I I don't know how often they improve them or increase the price. But the price we we're not paying, it's free again for a year. So, you know, if it's not in the budget next year, if it comes down to budget, that would be one of the things that we would cut. Because we don't have a lot of room to cut other things out of the budget, so.
Counsel Greider?
So this seems valuable, seems right, like the more places have them, the more value there is, right? Or so this kind of gives you almost like more work to do possibly if you're, it it looks like there isn't, so there's Eagle Point, I'm just thinking of like I-5, right? And kind of like spots, you know, towns right off. I five, do you happen to know in California, in Northern California, if there's, because I know you have the Oregon ones listed here, are there any just south or?
There are several more community agencies within Oregon that have them. But going south, I was told Siskiyou County was getting them.
Okay.
I don't know that for a fact, but I was told by the the company flock that they were looking at getting them. You know, being that we are on I-5, we do have a lot of people coming off I-5 that are involved in criminal activity. And, you know, a lot of it is the organized retail theft and that was the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission, they put $5 million towards this technology because they see the value in in capturing the organ, you know, organized retail theft organizations are pretty prolific. I mean, they'll go into Ulta's and and wipe the shelves clean and then go north or south. And so that's what really, you know, that's what this is based off of, is trying to capture some of these people associated with some major crime rings that travel up and down I-5.
The idea is if it gets a hit though, an officer will go, I know you said something about checking with a supervisor, but we don't always have that. They'll go right away to that locate or in pursuit of that vehicle or?
So they'll get a hit and what they'll typically do is go on the radio and say, you know, we received a flock hit at this location. And so it will tell whoever's in the area that this vehicle is in the area and you could go search for it and hopefully find it and and plan for that. Because sometimes, you know, we'll come across stolen vehicles and you won't know till you say that you're going traffic on them and then you really have no time to prepare. You don't know what what you're doing, what you're getting into. It can become a safety issue. And so this way, if you get a hit, maybe there's more people coming to help you, depending on the severity of why they're entered in the system. We've had people that we've stopped in Talent that were wanted out of Wyoming for arson. He he had burned an apartment complex down and he was just driving on South Pacific Highway. No ties to Talent, Oregon, but he was wanted and we assisted Wyoming. They actually drove out here. We assisted them in their investigation and, you know, helped them that way. So, you know, we, we may not have a lot of crime that happens in Talent. We do, but not serious levels like you see in other cities. But we also have a lot of people pass through the city that is, you know, not up to good.
Counsel Penamara?
Yeah, I just have a comment. I I think this can be a really useful tool. And I I don't, to me, the price tag is not too high. I like the idea of the transparency in terms of we have this system, it's in use. I don't like the idea of turning the city website into a scam. I don't think that's good for the mental health of a community, we all watching, you know, hits, especially if it's just people passing through. Of course, this would could be public information. I'm not saying not put it out there, but to put people's attention on it. And I don't think, it's not something that I feel would benefit our community. So that's the, my only disagreement with what I saw in the in the report.
Is it required that you do that? She said, no. Okay. Counsel Pushtiso?
I would just comment because at my day job, I've been recently working with the Medford Police Department to put together and I just saw a almost finished version of a whole dashboard on crimes in the city because the public has just been on their back. The police chief has been impressed to get this information out to the public once. I don't know if it's the same in Talent or not, but that's what's happening in Medford. And it's not just this, it's, you know, how many this kind of crimes, that kind of crimes, down to even the hours of the day that they're happening. Not the locations, though.
My comment is that this is going to, first of all, I want to, want to tell you how much I appreciate you spending time and helping us understand how this works. Because it isn't so much about, you know, trying to, trying to grill you on on a relatively small cost. And it's us about our ability to go out and speak intelligently about what this is and help with the narrative out in our community. And so when you spend the time with us and help us deeply understand, we can do the same. So thank you for that. I, as far as, as far as having this on the website and it is, you know, it does seem like, you know, we have to weigh weigh the value of that. And I do understand what you're saying, Counsel Penamara, but I I I think I I tend to believe that, you know, this could be a burden on on the staff to try and field these questions on a regular basis. And and on some level, there is an element of responsibility that people have to maintain, you know, their own well-being. And and I and I do feel like the the weight of preserving our staff time outweighs that a little bit. And and then also I do think that it also gives an opportunity for people who are probably going to want to see this information to add value in that section of website, whether that's, you know, on the police tab or whatever it is, but to add value with more information about how these work. And 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 just, you know, some more positive stuff that might help with some of the concerns that you have. But yeah, I I I just want to put that out there. And I I also think that this is a valuable tool. But I do think, I do think it would help with the transparency and help with the community conversation to review it annually. Are there any more comments? You don't need a decision from us. Have you guys decided, you you were saying you were evaluating, when do you expect to have these up?
As soon as we have a I guess move forward with, I mean, we've already been in contacts with the company. We have the grant. It's been accepted. So it's a matter of signing a contract with the vendor.
Any other questions or comments? Will we be able to see the policy?
Of course, I can send it out via email
Great.
To Counsel Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
It it also will be, our policy manual is on the city website. But because we haven't, it's in draft form right now and it's getting finalized to go, but I'll have to update the website as well.
Yeah. I would like to see it and presented to the council on the public record again to deepen our understanding of, you know, being able to have a community conversation if it comes up. Because this stuff does come up and and like sitting there having a cup of coffee and someone just pulls up a seat and wants to know more about it. So that'd be really helpful.
I have a, I have a copy here, but I'll I'll send it out.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you so much. All right. The next item on the agenda is 7.1, the City Manager's Report. Staff?
Mayor members of the council, just a couple of city manager reports. One is that repair work on Town Hall is continuing. It has taken longer than expected. The one reason for that is that the contractor in removing the cooking devices from the kitchen discovered that the underlying countertops were 85% asbestos. And it required special handling for that and disposal. We have selected a interior color scheme with the assistance of the Town Hall Ad Hoc Committee that takes into consideration the original use of the building as a school. So some of the wall spaces will be stuck forward. And that's one thing that will be coming along as well. The Ad Hoc Committee or advisory group that was formed has been looking at the building. We've got a good group there that includes architects and an engineer and historic preservationists. historic preservationists and uh uh they uh are getting ready to present, uh make a presentation with the council, probably in October about their recommendations that they have for a restoration of the building and the future use of the building. So we'll be, the staff working with them to put that report together for you. Uh the building has been reviewed in a couple of ways uh in addition to the fire recovery. Um we've looked at the rainwater handling system. I have found that several of the downspouts are filled with tree debris to a height of ten feet. Uh we found that uh many of the rain gutters on the building are failing. Um that there's some foundation issues with the building. It needs to be addressed, probably as a priority. Uh and we are having some folks look at the roof, not only at the main building, but also the addition. So uh I think you should expect to see a pretty comprehensive initial report from the working group uh in October. And we're getting some prices now on repairing portions of the roof and getting some quotes on repairs that are needed to the property. We'll hear more uh about that coming soon. Uh then I wanted also report that uh we have been working on putting together the Community Development Block Grant Application or the Community Resource Center. The application is due on September thirtieth. Uh however, we plan to submit it to the state this coming Monday. Uh that will enable us to get a first reading from the state agency as to uh i- its completeness. Uh the um uh application is quite comprehensive. It's twenty-one pages with lots of uh small print. Uh and it also requires some twenty exhibits, like a financial analysis, a cost benefit analysis. Uh uh a comparison of the costs of purchasing and retrofitting the building versus purchasing land and building it go. So we work with some contractors to get that information. So we'll have that together. We have probably a dozen or so letters of support from community organizations now. Uh and uh those will all go in showing community support, ranging from business organizations like talent, business alliances already to uh to the fire department, the historical society, uh and a number of community-based organizations that provide services uh uh to the citizens like access and Rogue Action Center and others. So great response to the requests for support. I'll hold the rest for the report from the urban renewal page.
Any questions about staff report? Uh Counsel Colley?
Just a super quick minor question. Is there a reason that the burned table is still leaning up against the town hall?
You know, no, there is.
Okay. I just walk past it all the time and I'm like, no, that's still there.
You should take care of it.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a just a comment and a and a question. Um we uh we've talked a little bit about um uh reaching out to property owners that have, um this is what reminded me of it, uh that have burned areas on their property. The example that comes to mind is the old sometime pools who uh their fence is still toasted and and the pool is still toasted and they don't seem to be doing anything. Is there any progress in that area?
We have contacted that property owner and uh they are actually looking at a larger cleanup project for the property, including filling in the pool and refencing the property. Do some grading and and other cleanup. So we're we're we have a, we're continuing to talk with them and others about it.
I I it does remind me that um I wonder if there is anything that we can work with community development to write a policy. Because I think, you know, there's some other properties that probably need some attention uh cleaning up. Cleaning up after the fire and if if it's helpful to have a policy that can be enforced.
I think it would. I think if uh the the Urban Renewal Agency, which has some money left could uh maybe offer some partnership with the taking out or increase some other structures that could be demolished. But there, I mean, there's some other, not only the pool, but some of the other properties have small residual structure.
If you brought that to the urban or no, I I'd wanna add to that conversation. I know for myself, when when I received my insurance policy, I I was given quite a bit of money to do that cleanup. And not everybody utilized utilized that piece of their insurance. Um so I definitely would wanna evaluate that as well, but I think it's, I I love the idea of, you know, looking for collaborative s- solutions. Um the other, um yeah, the other comment I wanted to make, uh when you were talking about um Town Hall, um it reminded me of something you said to me during the week and I think it'd be good for the order uh to hear a little bit about the facility maintenance plan that you have in place uh or that you are putting into place. And you don't have to do that today. You can maybe do it at another meeting or if you wanna speak to it today. But I I thought that uh, you know, that again, that's the level of uh the level of experience that just is gonna really help the city with just ongoing maintenance.
Let me bring that back as a a full report to you.
That'd be great. Um okay.
On urban re- want me to cover urban renewal?
Yep, seven point two.
Okay. So uh we are working with Housing and Community Services Department, which is the state administrator of the peer program. They have retained a consultant to administer the program for them. Uh we've been working with the state agency and the consultant. They provided us with quite a significant ask of documentation, of doing a risk assessment, determine our ability to actually conduct the project. And um I I think there was an assumption by the consultant that perhaps agencies that applied for this funding were further along in the development stage of the project itself. Uh you know, we're we're still in the concept stage. We have, we don't have engineered plans for the project or anything like that. So one of the uh requests was quite a sizable engineering ask for a design plans for the roads and um a storm water master plan for the entire uh project, which uh would really require a significant expense in the multiple six-figure payment to do the engineering for a project that that's just not ready for that. And and actually, the engineering is a part of the grant, so. What we were able to negotiate with them is that the only thing that they're now requesting, which in that regard, in addition to all of the financial data that we've given them, five years of audits, five years of budgets, internal systems, uh procedures, uh um there's just a variety of things, is that they want what they call a fifteen percent storm water plan. So we have retained an engineer to have prepared that. Uh it's due by October thirtieth. So we're making some assumptions in terms of the footprint of building sizes and how much of the land would have asphalt, you know, impervious, would cover asphalt and building roofs and such. Uh but the engineer that we retained, CCS, who did some preliminary work out there, you know, some years ago, um thinks they can get it done by the end of the month. And we're having another meeting with the peer slash ICF staff tomorrow online to make sure we're on track with what they want. So we've got about two grant application activities going on, one the CDBG and one is the peer. They're sort of on the time, same time scale, but uh.
Did I hear hear that Phoenix was facing some of the same issues with uh with with this funding source as well? Can I ask you a quick question about it?
Sure.
Um so you mentioned that they are including, you know, I I heard from, in a discussion from one counselor, when they said that uh it's funny because in the beginning, this came to us as submit your concept and write it, you know, um and here we are. Uh but it seems odd to me that they would be asking us for more specific plans, but then building engineer costs into the so they, are they saying they're gonna, they would have normally reimburse those costs or something?
I don't have an answer for that.
Yeah, it just, it just seems backwards.
Yeah. It's not as other, you know, the peer project is a CDBG project. CDBG disaster recovery peer. Just like other CDBG projects, they're administered by a district authority. But those projects don't require any advanced, any significant advanced engineering. It's all, you do that after the award. But it's just kind of a reverse of the norm uh on this. Then I was going to uh let you know that I'm going to request a special meeting of Tura on October second to discuss the gateway trailer disposition point and some questions and issues that have arisen there as to a path more.
Six, six P M?
At six.
So you're looking, everybody look at your calendars for October second at six P M if you can. Is that what you're asking us to do? Is to take, is let you know?
So it's October second, that's the regular council meeting.
Okay, be before the council meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can make that. So how's everybody else look?
There'll also be a study session to finish the
Do you have that study session scheduled for October second? That can move.
Yeah, we don't have to, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So on a different night, yeah, this is probably a little more time sensitive too, isn't it? Yeah.
Time sensitive.
Uh yeah, anybody not available? All right.
Thank you.
Got it.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Um just a
Yes.
Uh is forty-five minutes gonna be enough time for it or should we move it earlier?
Do five thirty.
Five thirty? Anybody object to five thirty? Somebody give me five thirty.
I like to have a break, a little break in between those outside.
Yeah.
Five thirty's okay.
I'm I'm good with that.
Five forty-five, if you ride like the wind.
I don't ride on Wednesdays, but it's it's close to the end of my day and sometimes stuff happens.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
All right. Looks like five thirty is
Sorry.
gonna give you ample time to to do this. Would you let Pam know that we're meeting on that as well?
Sure.
Yeah. Um all right, uh next item on the agenda is consent calendar, item number eight. Has everybody had a chance to review the consent calendar? Counsel Penamara?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of comments on uh eight point one.
Okay, let's take eight point one out and move it to um just before nine point one. So eight point one is being pulled out for discussion. Any other, Counselor Parry Miller?
Um I don't know that this needs to be pulled out, but I mean, I did just see the acknowledgement of the updated T for T bylaws and I wasn't sure if anything was needed to be commented on or not.
Speak to that.
Okay, so maybe we do just pull it out, just, I don't know.
Wanna pull it out for discussion?
Sure.
All right, eight point seven will be right after eight point two, I mean, eight point one. All right, so we are considering eight, two, three, four, five, six. Is there any other comments about it before I entertain a motion? Again, I'll entertain a motion on eight point two, three, four, five, and six. Counsel Parry Miller?
I move to approve, looking at that calendar, to eight point two through eight point six.
Second, we have a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar of item eight point two, eight point three, eight point four, eight point five, and eight point six. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight point one is up for discussion, approval of the twenty twenty-four financial statement. Uh Counsel, Counsel Penamara?
Yeah, so the uh I it's perfect. Um I just, I had asked, tested some questions on last month's and and they were very helpful to me, so I just wanted to share. Um on page nine of the packet, uh if you look at the estimated ending fund balance, and this is important because it's the end of last fiscal year, so um I thought it was especially interesting. Um it shows an estimated ending fund balance for the city of eleven point nine million, um which if you look at what was budgeted, it looks like, wow, that's almost five million more. But if you go back to our uh adopted budget, you see, so this turns into the beginning fund balance of the following fiscal year. We had budgeted uh ten point uh seven uh as beginning balance for all funds. Um so that's still, it's still, um I think, a positive thing that we have at the end of uh the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four. Um w- wouldn't have many more um than what we had budgeted, so that's that's kind of a cool thing.
Yeah.
The other thing I asked her about and she answered was um that we saw uh that we didn't get as much intergovernmental and this is on the same page, but if you look towards the top, like the fourth line, intergovernmental is about half a million less um than what we got and and her guess, her her uh memory was basically that FEMA and MOAP grants hadn't um materialized within that that fiscal period, which I think is is something that we kind of saw, got reported about. Um I'm curious, I'm looking at you in case I say anything dead wrong. But that was still being worked out. Um I mean, we're coming off of a, we're coming off of a disaster where there was a lot of opportunity for grants. There was a lot of loss of revenue and things were very up in the air. So um the last thing I wanted to mention was on page nineteen of the packet. Uh this is where Tessa calls out those balloon payments that are for related to water um of over a million dollars in uh twenty thirty and twenty thirty-five. Um those aren't budgeted for at this point, um but what she had said is that she had taken that into account when, when we redid the
Water rates.
Water rates, exactly, and that she's looking to um in the spring of twenty twenty-five to start making uh annual payments, so there isn't a balloon payment um coming up. Anyway, that, I just thought that was um that was helpful to me and um I love the way Tessa does these reports. They're super, super informative, but it helps to compare them against the budget. And uh just keep an eye on that.
Great comments. Thank you. And I do wanna add that uh on those uh balloon payments, um it's, I think it's a good information to put out that it is, um those balloon payments are on the new water tanks, on the new water tank. So um we we got most, we've got a a a the greater portion of that granted to the city, but uh that's that's just good knowledge. Yeah, thank you for that. Um are there any questions or comments uh from the council on this financial report? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Uh Counsel Penamara?
I move to approve item eight point one, uh the June twenty twenty-four financial statement.
Second, we have a motion in a second to approve. We have a motion and a second to approve eight point one, the approval of June twenty twenty four financial statement. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Gary, if you can uh, you know, convey to your team that um this is an example of really, really great performance, I, you know, we're, we're watching um, a lot of, a lot of struggle uh, around us with, you know, other jurisdictions that um, are facing really difficult financial times and just the fact that, that we had this, these discussions over the last couple of budget cycles, that this is what we were coming into. And in particular, the last budget cycle, you can see, you can see that while we had to tighten our belts, we're certainly, certainly gonna
We're making some progress.
Making some progress, and uh, that's a good place to be under the circumstances. Uh, a point you made as well, Counsel Penamorif. Will you convey that to your staff, please?
I certainly will.
Okay. Um, eight point seven is the update of Together for Talent bylaws, Counsel Penamorif?
Okay, I was trying to find them in the packet, does anyone?
Thirty three.
Okay, great. So this was um, Together for Talent uh, um made some changes to our bylaws, we had um, expert help from Hector Flores on what good bylaws need to look at, mostly it was just kind of putting things in uh, alignment with uh, the changes that this council made to the ordinance, I believe. And that had to do with the number of members and whether people had to attend meetings prior to joining and and that sort of thing.
Great. Any other comments? Any questions from anybody? Thanks for that uh, added information, Counsel Penamorif, I'll entertain a motion. Counsel Penamorif?
I move to approve item eight point seven acknowledging uh, acknowledgement of updated Together for Talent committee bylaws.
There's a second, we have a motion and a second to acknowledge uh, the uh, updated Together for Talent Committee bylaws, item eight point seven in the consent calendar. Any further? Uh, Dave, did you have a comment?
The bylaws. I, I don't know whether this constitutes approval and we don't need to look at those again, or whether it should be in the mix to the others that we're gonna look at too?
Um, off the, off the cuff, I would say in the mix, because I don't know if um, you know, we have, we're gonna have those practices to look at, and I haven't done a side by side comparison, I don't think the committee did either. This is really just surgical to fix some things.
Any reason to table it until then?
No, no, I think we should. No, I think we should approve it as is.
Okay. And then maybe look, yeah, and then maybe look at, and then what I'm hearing is it might, it might come back again.
Well, when all the
Yeah, okay.
Laws come back, yeah, sure.
All right, uh, so is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We're on to item nine point one, which is a resolution twenty twenty four dash zero nine nine dash R approving C D B G grant application staff.
Mayor, members of the council, this is a resolution uh, authorizing the city manager to execute the grant application document and any other documents that state is asking us to submit as a part of the application. This is something that we found in the fine print of the application that they want a specific authorization for someone to sign the application. You know, um, while there is general authority from city manager to do so, they, they're looking for a specific action by the council, so not uncommon. As I mentioned to Counsel Panamara earlier, this is a resolution that's been living in my head for twenty or thirty years, but used many, many times before. Uh, and fortunately, this one has the correct name of the city.
Yeah. It was, that was, that was a pleasure, I just don't mind telling you, it was. I do, uh, I just have a quick question. Uh, actually, it's a comment. This, it, one of the, one of the benefits of this resolution is that it brings that grant application before us, something that I've asked for on behalf of the council before, and um, I just uh, I would encourage, you know, um, for that to always be the case. Um, just because I think it helps, uh, it helps the council understand what's being applied for, unless there's a reason not to do it, I would hope we would always see the grant before.
We can make it a common practice.
Yeah, thank you.
It's frankly, it's easier to do it as a common practice than to try to remember which ones require it and which ones don't.
Great, so before I entertain a motion, is there any declarations? Counsel Parry Miller?
Thank you, mayor. Um, I, out of an abundance of caution, I've talked to Dave and Gary earlier, um, I just need to declare a potential conflict um, with this item, and that is because I do work for the Talent Business Alliance, as you all know. And um, Talent Business Alliance is a nonprofit that rents space from the city of talent. This means that I may or may not in the future be financially affected by the outcome of this specific item. But I am able to be objective in deliberating on this, so I plan to deliberate and vote, because it's just a potential.
Any other declarations? Counsel Greider?
Um, I also will, out of an abundance of caution, um have a potential conflict of interest with this agenda item, because I work for the Rogue Action Center, which is a nonprofit that rents space from the city. So I may or may not um, be financially affected by the outcome of this agenda item, depending on future events. But I am able to be objective, and it's just a potential, so I will discuss.
Anybody else? Counsel Penamorif?
I'll just say, just for educational purposes, I don't have a potential or actual conflict of interest, but I do serve on as a volunteer, as a board member on a couple of nonprofits.
Anybody else? All you nonprofit, uh, I'm nonprofit servant. I'm also gonna declare a potential conflict of interest, uh, because I work for Talent Business Alliance, and um uh, but I, I could be objective in this decision, and uh, so I intend to participate if uh, if, if the vote splits. Or, or in, in deliberation. Uh, so if there's no other questions, I'll entertain. Uh, Gary?
Uh, before I act, just wanted to take the opportunity to say that we have, as I mentioned before, a good number of letters of support. We can always use more. They can be individual letters, email letters, letters from organizations. Uh, we need them by Friday.
Counsel Penamorif?
Do we have a list of the organizations and individuals that have already provided letters? That would, that would be helpful.
We can produce that right away.
Okay.
And we can provide samples.
Great, yeah, I think samples went out before, but I didn't know who had, okay.
Any other comments or questions before I entertain a motion? All right, I'll entertain a motion, Counsel Colay.
I move to adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash zero nine nine dash R designating the city manager as the authorized signer of the community development block grant application for funding the acquisition of property at forty nine Talent Avenue for use as a community resource center.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash zero nine nine dash R designating the city manager as the authorized signer of the community development block grant application for funding the acquisition of property at forty nine Talent Avenue to use as a community resource center. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
We have the roll call.
Oh, it's a resolution, thank you, roll call, please.
Counselor Colay?
Yes.
Counselor Penamorif?
Yes.
Counselor Greider?
Yes.
Counselor Pestizo?
Yes.
Counselor Parry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item number ten point one, which is community development update on Almeida Fire Recovery Staff.
Mayor Council members, we have with us tonight Senator Nick Hubert, who uh, may, who has a PowerPoint presentation
Thank you.
on this topic, and I'll turn this over to Nick.
Thanks, I just wanna also say for the record that I asked for this um, report in light of the uh in light of the time of year, you know, the September four years anniversary. And um, I just thought it would be a good time to update the community and, and get us all informed uh, moving forward uh, about the actual um, state that our recovery is in. There's heard, you know, again, I've heard some misinformation, I just thought getting some accurate information would be a, a good idea.
Let's just make her, make sure you can make her.
You guys hear me?
Thank you, Gary, uh, and thank you also for um, Nick, for, for putting this together.
Of course.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so just to elaborate on what uh, mayor was just stating, uh, we just passed that four year mark of the Almeida Fire event, and I just wanted to give you guys, but I'll try to keep it relatively brief, but just a quick recap of the, the rebuild and recovery update process. So, just to give you guys an update, sorry about that. I have a, if you guys can follow along, um, and whoever doesn't have this information in front of them, I can give um, some information. Uh, here's a graph um, that shows the rebuild recovery progress, and that's updated as of this September. Um, so actually updated through um, September tenth, I believe. So in terms of single family dwellings of the three hundred and twenty five total um, that were uh, destroyed in the Almeida Fire event, um, two hundred and forty uh, permits have been finalized, um, and that's either finalized or rebuilt. Um, so two hundred and forty out of three hundred and twenty five total. Um, so that's just an eighty, eighty five total remaining that needs to be rebuilt up to this point. Um, and that's for all the single family dwellings within the city of talent. Um, in terms of multifamily residential dwellings, um, out of the hundred and twenty seven total, um, we have seventy nine that have been rebuilt, and we have forty eight remaining at this moment. Um, for manufactured homes, um, there were two hundred and ninety one total that were destroyed. Uh, we have rebuilt one hundred and forty six, and we have one hundred and forty five remaining. Um, and so we've, we've gotten basically right about half at this point. And there's, there's still a lot, um, that's currently in progress that hasn't been finalized as of yet, a lot of houses that have been, uh, and are in the progress of being rebuilt over at um Mountain View, um, as well as Talent Mobile Estates, uh, which will be, a lot of those will be finalized shortly here. Um, and that doesn't, that number does not even include uh, the FEMA temporary housing uh, within the city as well, there's actually an additional twenty seven units from the numbers I could find on top, that stacks on top of the hundred and forty six total. Uh, in terms of commercial structures, um, out of the sixty one total that were destroyed, um, we have rebuilt up to this point seventeen total, and there are forty four remaining. So I'm just going to.
And then there's uh, the commercial, um, that doesn't count the commercial in the pipeline, right?
No, it does not.
Because will you take questions along the way?
Yes.
So going back to that first slide, Counsel Penamorif?
Yeah, um, so this is the, the numbers that, well, we're not looking at inside anymore, but uh, the, the numbers there uh, just had to do with what was lost in the fire and whether it's been rebuilt or not, and would not include, for example, we were told that there were, people were building back more densely, the ADUs that people have built, or any new construction that was not destroyed.
Yeah, correct, that's just the rebuilt total.
Right.
So only the houses that were destroyed that were actually rebuilt. So if they rebuilt, you know, if they had one house that was destroyed in the fire, and they rebuilt a duplex instead of the single family that was there existing before, that includes the credit for one of them, but not both.
So I guess just to follow up, I'm wondering another analysis could be if you included um, those other units as well, it would paint slightly a different picture, not so much the recovery, but just how much uh, the, the town is growing.
In terms of total growth, yeah.
Yeah.
We, I'm sure we could put something together that would show that in addition to. Because that would be, that would be beneficial.
I think of that one neighborhood that's off of Talent Avenue, um, I think it's close to kind of Berry Court a little bit. Like, there's been quite a, quite a number of houses that have built there, do you know what neighborhood I'm talking about?
Uh, yeah, there's, there's, and I can't remember the, the neighborhood name, but there's been a large refill.
Yeah.
Um, and, and update in that, in that, um, that neighborhood specifically, uh, where they've refilled and then actually built up quite a bit from what it was before, so.
Nice homes there too. Uh, Counsel Colay?
Yeah, thank you for this, the graph is really helpful, on the blue is that are there, is there another number that you could provide, like, does that include um, permits that have been pulled that haven't been finalized?
That, that was just um, the total number that were destroyed, as per records that we have from the city and from Jackson County as well, and those are FEMA, FEMA records.
Okay.
Right.
Why scroll on this thing without jumping around? Sorry, let me go back. Sorry.
Can I just have one more quick question on that first slide?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I'm, I'm aware of additional single family dwellings that have been built, quite, quite a few of them, but I'm not aware of any additional, like, multifamily that's been built outside of the burn scar, has there been any?
Outside of the, the affected areas?
Outside of the burn scar, yeah.
So, yeah, actually, there has been, um.
Oh, H plus.
Yeah, H plus is one of those, right? Yeah, so I'm not counting any of those numbers, because that was not a part of the, the rebuild process, but there is.
You're counting, oh, oh, you, the new one that's being built here, you counted that in the pipeline.
That's, yeah, that's in the pipeline, and I will get to that slide.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And then I just provided um, some aerial pictures. Uh, I think these actually give a really good snapshot of the before, the during, and the after, or current progress. So you can see, and I just did snapshots of individual neighborhoods within the city that I thought were applicable. Um, so the first one is um, Autumn Ridge, um, and that's over off of Suncrest. Um, you can see quite a large number of the houses were destroyed, and quite a large number have been rebuilt up to this point, now obviously, there's still a few that are either in process or have not yet been rebuilt, but for the most part, most of these units have been rebuilt. Uh, some single, mostly single families, some duplexes, and then along uh, at the very end of the snapshot on that right hand side, you can see Suncrest Road, there's a few multifamily um higher density residential structures. I believe it was two ten, two twenty Suncrest that development did actually get approved, and I will talk about that in a later slide, but they will be rebuilding um, in the near future here as well. Um, second one is um, neighborhood off of Gangness Drive and Talent Avenue. As you can see, uh, nearly all the homes were destroyed. Um, this is actually one of those neighborhoods, uh, mayor, that that has been rebuilding and has actually been, been rebuilding up, um, and infilling the density of that area, uh, as you know, this property is, is now zoned uh, residential high density as of the two thousand nine, or two thousand nineteen um zoning uh, updates, so there's been a lot of infill of, with um, some duplex and multifamily housing in the neighborhood, and um, obviously, you can see here quite a few of the dwellings have been rebuilt, and quite a few of the the empty spaces that you see there from the July third aerial shot. Um, there is quite a few that are in progress of being rebuilt, there's been a couple of um lot partitions where they've split the lot to build more houses in the area as well. There was a cluster development that was also approved in this neighborhood that has not yet uh, began, but it, I believe it will be in the near future.
That's exciting.
Yeah.
So is that's not, that's not the first cluster, is it? But it's gotta be close to it.
I think it, it's actually the I think it, it's actually the second one. So, yeah, and that's the, the lots over by, um. I believe it's two oh-two, two oh-six, two oh-eight Gangness as well.
Right.
So moving to the next one, um, as I was speaking of earlier, Mountain View Estates. So nearly the entire park was wiped out, saved for. A few manufactured homes here and there along the park. Um, they have been. Um, rebuilding at a fairly quick pace. A lot of houses have been rebuilt and finalized up to this point. There's a few that are in progress and I know they're working on. Uh, getting the rest of them in filled before the, uh, before next year around this time. So as you can see, there's been quite a bit of progress on that one as well. I think it's about, they're about a little over halfway at this point. And same goes for Oak Valley. Um, you can see. Um, especially this year, there's been a lot of, uh, progress in terms of how, single family dwellings being rebuilt. Within, uh, this neighborhood specifically. And then moving forward, I have, um, Old Bridge, Rap Road, Lithia Avenue neighborhoods. You can see kind of the same thing. Um, the Old Bridge Village has pretty much been completely rebuilt with single family dwellings. Um, the neighborhood's coming together quite ni- nicely. Uh, Lithia Avenue has, uh. For the most part being, been rebuilt as well with some duplexes and higher level, uh, residential dwellings. And then the last slide here is, um. Talent Mobile Estates in terms of the aerials. And. Like you can, as you can see, pretty much the whole park, um, was destroyed in the fire, um, save for. I, I believe there is, um, ten or eleven spaces, um. Along the edge of, um, Talent Avenue. Um, in Arnos. And then the rest of the park was, uh, was wiped out and they've, um, they've been working with us to get their permits. They're working on getting their C of O at this point for the park. So. Work in progress and we're, we're nearly there with that one.
Fantastic.
Uh, there's also been some, uh, some rebuilt. Uh, dwellings and, um, some multifamily dwellings and, uh, units along, um. Arnos as well and Talent Avenue in that area. So just so you get, teach you guys an update on current, uh, projects in the pipeline. Uh, so Talent Travel Center, Commercial. Commercial building rebuilt. Um, that's going to be. Eight thousand two hundred and twenty-five square feet when they're done, um, working on getting their CFO shortly here. Uh, mixed use retail complex at. One sixty North Pacific Highway. Um, which is just over ten thousand five hundred square feet and there's going to be. A number of different, um, retail units within that complex and the same goes for two-ten North Pacific Highway as well. Um, and then the, both of those are, um. Currently moving towards getting, um, certificate of occupancy and getting finalized. Um, we have actually. Finalled some of the, um, the residential units on the back of the retail complex at one sixty North Pack. Uh, but the, the retail portion itself has not been finalized as of yet. Um, Sunday afternoon's headquarters. Um, they've broken ground out there, um, and that's. Going to be a thirteen thousand square foot, um, office complex for their headquarters. Um, and that's in the, in progress right now. They have land use approval and are working towards, um. They've got their plans submitted and they're working towards getting their conditions approved. Uh, and start the, uh, the building process. Same goes for National Heating and Air at eight twenty-one South Pacific Highway. Uh, that's a rebuild of their property, eleven hundred and eighty-five square foot. Retail and, um. Storefront, uh, affordable housing complex, um, that's H plus. That's going to be at six hundred South Pacific Highway. It's going to be twenty-six units. Consisting of, um, thirteen duplexes. Um, and then. Commercial Warehouse Edition was just approved at six eighteen South Pacific Highway. Um, almost thirty-five hundred square feet. That's. In addition to the other warehouse complex that's already existing out there, um, and that's part of a rebuild as well. And then, um. Pardon me, but I, I did. Uh, mentioned this earlier with the H plus complex over at forty-one Suncrest. That's twenty-two units, just to give you a specific amount. Um, and then the multifamily residential complex that I had spoken of earlier on Suncrest Road at two-ten Suncrest, is it going to be? Um, an additional forty-two units. That was approved. They have not submitted plans yet, so I'm assuming that's going to, um, going to be coming through sometime shortly here.
Can I ask about two, um, other, um. Rumored projects?
Yeah, go ahead.
So there was, uh, some discussion or, um. On, about the property that's behind Camelot of a hospitality. Overnight accommodations going on in there. Is that still working in progress?
So, um, the gentleman, um. That owns that property had come forward to, um. The Architectural Review Committee about submitting for, um, what was originally proposed to be like. His, his, um. His proposal was a tiny, tiny home hotel. Uh, so it was basically like a hotel that consisted of, um. Smaller, almost like ADU-like suites.
Cotages?
Uh, yeah, like cottages, eight, eight total. Um, but he was having some issues with, um, with Jackson County Building Department, the Oregon Building Codes. Trying to get those, um. Permitted and so he kind of went back to the drawing board and he's still thinking about doing that. Um. That type of proposal in terms of the, the hotel, but instead of having, um, individual units that are going to be of different design, he's going to. Come back and, um. Is proposing to have. A single unit. Um, consisting of different suites that will be individually themed on the interior rather than the outside. And he plans on, um. Putting that in with a courtyard with landscape appropriate to, um. The old town standards, uh, of talent, so. That's coming through in the pipeline. He hasn't officially submitted a pre-application conference. That's just. Based on discussions we've had with the owner applicant at this point.
Great. And then the other one is across the street from it. Looks like they're breaking ground on, is that still going to, are they still looking at, uh, food truck pod there?
Um, so actually it's interesting. You just brought that up because Gary and I had just spoken of that as well. So I just reached out to the owner, um, because. Um. I haven't heard anything within the last month about if they're wanting to move forward with their proposal, but their initial proposal was they wanted to have, um. A food cart complex similar to the foodery. Uh, maybe a bit smaller, uh, to utilize that area, but they, like I said, haven't been. Through an official pre-application conference and I just recently sent an email out to the owner, um. Uh, of that property and haven't gotten a response back, so. Um, I will fill you guys in when I have more information on that one.
Awesome. So that is, uh, but they are, they are clearing the, is that the same property that is being cleared, right?
That's correct.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions or comments? Counselor Coley?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Um, thanks again for the presentation. It's. Especially the side-by-side photos. I mean, they're stark and shocking in many ways, but it's. Heartening to see the rebuild that's been happening. Two tree-related questions, so. One, um, there's been in some of these. Projects that you've listed here. Street trees being planted that are not on the list and, um, kind of subpar landscaping. I'm curious if you could speak to what the process is, if there's any for. A developer to either obtain the appropriate street tree list, or is it always going to be a kind of. Compliance check afterwards, or somebody just reporting it? Um, yeah.
So in regards to that question, so, um, obviously there's been. Some upheaval in my department. The previous Community Development Director, uh, left and. So there were, uh, previously approved, uh, landscape plans that had been submitted and approved with appropriate trees. Um, but, um, at least on. Two projects, I want to say, um, the landscaping was put in incorrectly. Um, and so I've had to reach out to the applicants and let them know, um. That they're going to have to put the appropriate street trees in and just so we can. Not have this issue come up again in the future. I've actually reached out to applicants, um. On proposals, um, that are currently in the pipeline and let them know like, hey, that we do have an approved street tree list from two thousand twenty-one. Um, if it's going to be a tree that is. Um, going to be a street tree in terms of location on the property, you're going to need to follow that list specifically. And so I do provide that, uh, to the applicants, to the contractors, to the builders, um. So I'm assuming that any issues that we have moving forward should be minimal at that point. So. The city is aware and is on top of, of the properties that I think.
That's really good to hear. I'm, I'm excited to hear that. My second question around tree planting. I hope, I hope you're aware that the city has a pretty large grant and one of its kind grant. From the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board for tree planting. Um, and we're approaching the last season of that grant. The grant ends in, I think, July of twenty twenty-five and you really can't plant trees after May. Um, I know Gao Ying's managing that grant. Um, but is there any sort of process when people are coming before the planning department about learning about that opportunity to get free? Approved trees on their property?
Yeah, when, when, uh, when applicants come in, especially with these larger projects, I've tried to, um, spearhead that by letting them know that we do have opportunities. Um, with the city to obtain trees and I try to be upfront at the time of submission and let them know that they can pursue that. Uh, and then at the time of their landscape plan as well. Um, that way we're verifying and we're on it so they can move forward with the process. Um, and I've spoken to Gao Ying and Hector Flores and we're kind of all on the same page about that as well.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you. I, I do think it's noteworthy that, um. You know, when you look at the, the pace of the different aspects of our development, um. You know, it, it's probably self-explanatory that single family dwellings have come back so much faster than the rest of.
Yeah.
Rest of the projects. I mean, I, I think, I, I think it's worth saying in large part because. Uh, some of the council members and some of the planning commission members jumped right in right after the fire and supported a fast track permitting process. It was just one of our first focuses. Uh, to get single family dwellings back, uh, online. And, um, and it's certainly reflected in, in this, this recovery. Especially when you talk about there being other, other neighborhoods with those single family dwellings as well. And, uh. Um, this is, this is a great report. I really appreciate it and. Uh, I just think it's, um, it's really good for us all to be informed, um, when people out in the community are. Are expressing concerns or confusion or, uh, accolades for, I mean, I hear as much accolades as anything else, so. Thanks, everybody, for taking a minute to, to learn a little, uh, learn about the recovery process, the pace of the different types of housing and. And so on. Uh, Counselor Panemirov?
I also agree. This is a wonderful report. It'd be great to have it. You know, profiled on the website. Um, especially those nice graphs about recovery.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I'm, uh. I was telling Gary today that I'm planning to write a, um, um, uh, write for the flash. And, um, it'd be really great to, he, he volunteered you, Hector, to give me a QR code. Um, to take people right to this great report. Yeah, it's awesome. Thank you. Yeah, Counselor Coley?
I think it's a great idea to include that report, especially the info about current projects in the pipeline. Um, you know, people are always asking what's happening with this lot or is something going to be built here, or I see. Ground being broken, what's happening there? So I think the more information that. People can get about that, the better. Uh, in a digestible format instead of, you know, having to call you and go, what's going on?
I agree.
Number to follow up, is that, is that on the website? Can they go to the planning pages and see what is in the pipeline and is it refreshing?
They can, they can see current projects that have been submitted and or approved in timelines, but some of these, um. Some of these projects aren't, um, available, at least in the detail that is on here, so. That's why I want to try to have, um, that information, um, applicable and available to the public.
Yeah, because that's great because people wonder what's going, what's going to be built here.
Correct.
Counselor Greider?
Um. Not sure who this would be a question for, um. Probably not necessarily. To you, but just, um. What really stands out to me is that manufactured home difference in the rebuild. Is there any, I know there's been efforts, uh, towards the commercial rebuild and, um. Is there any focus on? What's going on there with that?
In terms of the manufactured homes, so.
With the difference in the, because they're, you know, half and, and the others have rebuilt beyond.
Um, I, I just think, uh, it's taken some of the, the parks and people in the parks longer to. Because what I've heard is a lot of the, the older population that was in the parks prior, um, moved out of town. Um, and so the parks are trying to infill, um, with rebuilds and it's going a little bit slower and trying to. Obtain manufactured homes, get people in there and get that rebuild process started. I know for some people it took. Uh, a bit longer than they were anticipating to get, um, some of their money back as well, so I think that's a factor. Uh, and then just so you guys know for that total, that's not including the additional, um. Seventy-seven units that are going to be going on over at Talent Mobile Estates, so that'll be a significant amount. Uh, towards that total as well.
On that point, um, I, I, I think it's important to say that what has held that back. And you, when you see that seventy-seven number join the rest of that graph, it'll make a huge difference, but what's been holding that back is. Is just the, the slow-mo on that. Housing funding.
Yeah, exactly.
Project is leaning on that housing funding that just has not come in yet.
Yeah.
And. So I think we'll see, we'll see a, a huge jump as soon as that funding lands. Counselor Pestejo?
Yeah, I was thinking about, um, putting some of this information on the website and. Pretty sure there used to be an interactive map of planning projects. And, and sort of what states are in, is that still out there?
Yeah, the, um, the Arc map that we use, um, is still available and, um, it should be updated with all. Current permits as well as land use approvals.
Just see what's happening but where it's at.
Yeah, because you can go to a site and then as long as you have. That tab opened up. It should show a little insignia. You can click on it and it'll show you. Permits or land use activities that have happened and occurred on that site, so.
Right.
That is still available to the public. Um, I can talk with Hector and see. I guess I haven't looked at the website just to see how easy it is to get to, so. If we can make it a little bit more user-friendly, then we'll, we'll look into that and try to fix it up.
Well, many thanks to the Community Development Department. We couldn't have made this kind of progress without you. And I know, uh, again, especially with some, some of that. Uh, single family residential. I know it's been a. Kind of a tough go and you guys really pulled it off, so. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, all right. So, uh, next item on the agenda is anything else on that? Gary? Okay. Next item on the agenda is Commission and Committee Reports. Counselor Panemirov?
Well, together for talent, uh, very, up there, up there, uh, sorry, corrected our bylaws. And, um, we also have, I think there's a, a new member that we're excited about, um, for you to interview when we have the chance.
Great. Anybody else? Committee, Commission Reports? Anything new since the last meeting? Oh, when I, when I forced. Everybody to give a committee report out of sequence and Hector was over there rolling his eyes like, that mayor, that crazy mayor. Anyway. Uh, I got, uh, that was pretty funny night, um. Yeah, Counselor Parry Miller?
Uh, just a reminder that the open gallery at, uh, City Hall will be this Sunday from one to three. And, uh, T-PAC is going to be featuring the artist that is in there and her name is Megan Young. Anyways, that will be happening and they're very excited and thank you for being willing to. Step in for me because I won't be around to open the space for them.
My pleasure. It's such a great, great thing that, that you guys do. I'm happy to help. Anybody else?
Planning Commission meeting.
Yeah, no, no planning commission meeting. How, how are things going on, uh, the trees?
Yeah, I mean, that was kind of two things that we were. Thinking about, oh, a grant is on everybody's mind, um, not leaving any trees on the table. So trying to find. Spots for them all. It's a group of people that love trees, so they're concerned when the wrong tree gets planted in the wrong place.
Fair enough.
Yep.
All right. Anybody else? Okay. We'll move on to other. Look ahead, eleven point one.
Well, we haven't populated it very well. Uh, Hector and I looked at that earlier. Today, we actually have more stuff coming, coming along than appears on that. Page for you, so we apologize for not having that updated.
Okay.
There's, there's also a lot more stuff on my list. Uh, that needs to come with the council, but we're just. Trying to catch a breather a lot of volume. Looking on it now.
Yeah.
To be able to do that.
Yeah. Yeah. We're pulling for you guys. Counselor Greider? We're pulling for you guys. Counselor Greider?
You may, this may be part of that then. I was curious if we were going to circle back. And I know this is partially a Tura thing, but I thought we talked about it at City Council meeting about nonprofit rates and lease agreements for city or Tura-owned properties. And we ended that discussion. I think we were going to table it for the moment and come back to it or?
Oh, for the, oh yeah, you're right. We dealt with the lease rates for the office properties, but we didn't deal with the rates for this bill.
And if straight, I think. And if they would, right, and then but the possible selling versus keeping for revenue stream and, and that conversation.
We make a note of that because.
Counselor Parry Miller?
Were you talking about, because I'm trying to refresh my memory, were you talking about the rental rates for like community space? Like the community center and Old Town Hall, when, if it ever is?
Yes, and I know we have the, the rate.
For the city.
But it maybe wasn't reflective of
Well, I think we were talking about whether with eventually sun setting Tura, if the city was going to take on those, keep those properties. And there was discussion about selling versus leasing and revenue streams.
So that maybe needs to come to the urban renewal
Yeah.
agenda.
And then even whether or not though the nonprofit rate had been decided, would that be offered when, as leases are expiring and or would there, would you want to look at selling some of those properties?
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Pescito?
Yeah, I'm curious, a while back and I had missed a couple of meetings, there was a discussion about a working groups to work on the zoning code updates. Did that ever get established?
We did not proceed with that. The staff member or the person managed that process for us. It is on the staff of RV cog. And that staff person left RV cog.
Oh, okay.
They're in the process of hiring a new person. So we have kind of a temporary person handling projects, long range projects at our RV cog. And there are five of those projects that, that person's currently trying to cover in a, in her regular work. So I, I advised the planning commission chair just this week or last week that we're just not in a position to staff that.
Okay, but it's still on the horizon.
We still intend to do that. It's just a matter of capacity.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments or questions for the look ahead? All right, hearing none. Any other business from anybody else? Besides me? All right, really quick update, RV cog. I've been in touch with them to support the city manager's review process. They do have availability for that. So we'll be pulling the, the usual team together, the vice chair of Urban Renewal and the vice chair of City Council and myself. And we'll, we'll initiate that process very soon. And the contract with RV cog is up to date, right? So we don't have to worry about, might be worth checking to make sure we're contracted for both of those. Because they, I know they have two tracks. One is to support the city with HR services and the other one is to support the council in management services.
I'll, I'll track them.
Thank you. The other thing is we've talked a, a couple of times about initiating a hospitality tax in, in our community. And I, I, I'm hoping we could get like an initial we can start that conversation. And does anybody else object to hearing some information on hospitality, how tax, how it works? How it benefits a city? Required uses, et cetera, frozen, frozen costs, right? And then that, and we can decide whether or not we want to advance that conversation beyond that. And then I just want to give everybody an update on the O G E C matter. As you all recall, and all of you know, back in February, there was an online participant that wanted to speak. And at that time I believed that the request form was not compliant. And so I did not take the speaker request form from online. Once I discovered that that was not the case in discussion with Dave and we looked into the rules on the matter, a few days later I wrote an apology letter to the, to the person and, and then I had some back and forth correspondence with that person that seemingly resolved the issue, at least with, with him. And then a complaint was filed by somebody else, O G E C, took up the matter. And when we provided our information, I just told them, yes, that happened. No need to do an investigation. What next? And what next was supposed to happen last week, where they were going to provide us with a stipulated letter to, to take training essentially. And that got postponed to next week. So I know that you guys all had got communications that it was going to happen last week. And I'm not sure if you all got the communication that instead it's going to happen next week. I plan to appear just to reiterate that, you know, I immediately took responsibility for it, then apologized then and appreciate all that they've done. And also just to make sure that I make it clear on the record that really it was my mistake. It was not the mistakes of my colleagues. And even though we know how the rules work, I, I was accountable to the person as the person who caused the mistake in the first place. And I want to also be accountable on the record with O G E C. So we'll be looking for the training that I think they're going to give to everybody every year anyway. And I, I'm glad for that. I hope they time it for after the first of the year. So also new candidates can benefit from it as well. Or, you know, whatever council is in place at that point in time is how I should have put that. So anyway, I just wanted to give you an update on that. It's all going well. They're, they're great to work with. As you know, I mean, during the testimony, Susan said, oh, they call us all the time. We know who they are. And really gave a great update and they, they obviously respect talent. Also hearing from our, our staff as well. So it's all going as we expected and yeah, I appreciate, it's good to see that the system works. Yeah, so. So that's an update on that. It should be all finished by next, not by next week. And, 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 and I think it's worth saying that we're correcting our procedures in the council rules to reflect this brand new, well, fairly new change in the rules about how to deal with online app speakers. So I think we're all in good shape at this point. And I think it's pretty much resolved. And I don't have anything else. So if there's nothing else from anybody else on other, I'm going to go ahead and move us to written communications. There are none. And we will adjourn this meeting at nine oh nine.